Yes, I'm embarrassed.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the January fourteenth, twenty twenty five City of Westminster Planning Commission Meeting. It's been mentioned that if you wish to speak, there's a sign up sheet in the back. Please make use of that if you'd like to. And at this time, I'd like to call for the role.
Chair Bosscher.
Here.
Chair Carpenter, excuse me, Acting Chair Carpenter, Acting Vice Chair Carpenter.
I'm here, thanks.
Commissioner Colling.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Here.
Commissioner Mayo.
Here.
Commissioner Zhang.
Excused.
Commissioner Kinnear.
Here.
Commissioner Peg.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum, and the first alternate, Commissioner Kinnear will be voting with the majority tonight. All right. At this time, I'd like to do a consideration of the minutes of the preceding meeting, that was the July twenty third, twenty twenty four meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Second.
Thank you. Do we need to do a roll call vote on this?
No, it can be a yea or nay.
Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say yea.
Yea.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. So at this time, I would like to go ahead and take care of some housekeeping issue. We need to vote on a chairman and a vice chair for the planning commission. I will open the meeting to nominations from the commissioners. Anyone who wishes to be considered, please nominate yourself or nominate someone else if you wish.
I nominate Chair Bosscher.
Any other nominations?
Is that a nomination for the chair?
Oh, for chair, yes.
Thank you, just want to be clear, thank you.
Okay. Looks like there are no other nominations, so I will close the nominations and we can vote. I believe we can just do this by voice vote, so everyone in favor of Mr. Bosscher for chairman, please say aye. Aye.
Aye, do we need a motion first?
Is it a motion? Okay.
I move, I move to that, to make Jim Bosscher chair by acclamation.
Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, all right, now we can vote by voice. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, please say nay. Passes unanimously. Next item is voting for vice chair, and I nominate David Carpenter for vice chairman.
Second.
Okay, any other nominations? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously. So we have taken care of that item. Next item is a public hearing on the action requested for sign variance for Uplands filing number one, tract A, block four, tract D, block five, tract M, block seven. And recommendation, this may not be necessary. Okay, that's the next item, so item three A is now open for presentation.
Am I on, Barrett?
You are.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, point of order real quick, before, before the Uplands presentations happen, I will make my usual disclaimer that Uplands is a member of the Westminster Chamber of Commerce. I am a member of the Westminster Chamber of Commerce and on the Board of Directors. I have no fiduciary, fiduciary ties to the Uplands or anything like that. And I will vote based on the evidence presented and review that and only the evidence presented, and I can be fair and impartial.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Carson Beierhoff, planning with the city's planning division. As part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, it's associated detachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the public notice published in the Westminster window, the mailed notices, and the posted notices are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The notices of the public hearing were mailed to ninety-four property owners and tenants within three hundred feet of the parcels under consideration tonight. Nine public notification signs were posted on the subject properties. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. Here's a map of where the sign variance for the three subdivision entry signs are proposed in Uplands filing number one. The tracks are as follows, tract A, block four, tract D, block five, and tract M, block seven. The sign variance request is for three subdivision entry signs. A subdivision entry sign is a type of freestanding sign as defined in section eleven, eleven, nine, and the Westminster Municipal Code. The variance is for three of the five subdivision entry signs to be located at a different location from how it is defined in the code. For section eleven, eleven, nine, D, definition, a subdivision entry sign is a monument sign located along the entry of a subdivision from a collector or arterial street. Visuals here are taken from this code section, showing where the placement of subdivision entry signs are to be located. Further, table eleven, eleven, nine, four, and section eleven, eleven, nine, grants both the number and the allowable sign area based off the entrances from arterial and collector streets. This request for a definition change exceeds the thresholds of administrative approval. The applicant provided a site plan exhibit with a variance request. The site plan shows the proposed locations of three subdivision entry signs requesting a variance from the subdivision entry sign definition. The request proposal is to allow three of the subdivision entry signs to be located on the corners of the collector and arterial roads on the perimeter of the larger Uplands A parcel. More specifically, on the southwest corner of West eighty-eighth Avenue and Federal Boulevard, the northwest corner of West eighty-fourth Avenue and Federal Boulevard, and the northeast corner of West eighty-fourth Avenue and Lowell Boulevard. The applicant provided elevation exhibits showing the dimensions and materiality of the subdivision entry signs. Type one on the left would be for the signs located on the two eastern intersections, on the southwest corner of West eighty-eighth Avenue and Federal Boulevard, and the northwest corner of West eighty-fourth Avenue and Federal Boulevard. Type two on the right would be for the southwestern sign on the northeast corner of West eighty-fourth Avenue and Lowell Boulevard. Section eleven, eleven, thirteen, E, two, of the Westminster Municipal Code provides six criteria that must be met for the planning commission to approve a sign variance. Staff finds that two of the six criteria have not been met. The first criteria is that the property has a special circumstance or condition that would restrict the effectiveness of the sign. There are no special circumstances or conditions that would restrict the effectiveness of these signs. Staff finds that there are opportunities to meet the definition of subdivision entry signs and to locate the signs in areas that serve as entries off collector and arterial streets. The second criteria is that the approval of the variance would not weaken the purpose of the sign code regulations, the comprehensive plan, or the zoning district. Staff finds that the variance would weaken the purpose of the sign regulations as it would set precedence to allow future variances beyond quantifiable and numerical standards. And for the final four criteria, staff finds that the last four criteria have been met. Staff recommends that the planning commission hold a public hearing and deny the requested sign variance. The applicant is with us tonight and has a presentation to share with you as well. Thank you for your attention, there are several staff members with us this evening, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do Commissioners have any questions for staff or Mr. Beierhoff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, good evening, my name is Marcus Pockner, thank you very much, Mr. Chair and Chairperson for this opportunity to speak to the commission. I am here tonight as a land use and community outreach consultant for Uplands. We certainly appreciate this opportunity to talk about the sign code. I did just pass that out, I will kind of generally present here on five or six slides, then Kaylee will come forward and go through the approval criteria on a one by one basis. And then I'll come back and conclude and actually turn to that handout that was just handed to you, so I'll kind of conclude by looking at this. As you all certainly understand that the sign code variance, sign proposed sign variances, come before this body, this is the determining body from this, from the planning commission, and we certainly understand that role. What we would say is we are endeavoring tonight to really show why this is such an important part of our comprehensive design, and why we believe this has such an integral part of our design for the community. As you can see here today, as I drove there a few minutes ago, thinking about eighty-fourth and federal as an idea or a sequence here, to really help establish a strong sense of place for Uplands and for Westminster, how important this is as a transition. To help activate the overall community, to think of this as a gateway coming off of eighty-fourth, maybe moving west on eighty-fourth itself, going north or south on federal or on Lowell, to really understand the change, the place, and the mixed-use character that we have so meticulously designed with a great staff and community over the last five years. We also believe that this completely supports the future BRT along federal, and is actually very important for wayfinding, sense of place, and direction along federal. We also believe this is probably the most vital part of identifying commercial investment in the village center at eighty-sixth. You have to know to go to eighty-sixth, it is internal to the site, it is not on the perimeter. Our commercial, our core that really makes this happen at eighty-sixth, and we need that sense of arrival at the intersections where we are stopped in traffic and seeing signs as you move toward the site. Our request, which staff did a great job on, to show the two, the three signs that we are requesting, just showing again, the subdivision entry signs there, the type one along federal, again at eighty-eighth and eighty-four. Clearly, the entrance into the community, that gateway, that sense of arrival, and why we acknowledge we are going through this process to make this variance request because we think that's such an important gateway. Secondly, the type two along Lowell, on that northeast corner of Lowell, again, coming down off of Lowell into the site, Shaw Heights immediately across the site, clearly entering the Uplands after Bellevue Christian. I just want to reiterate something to all of you, this is kind of our, we've always talked about kind of the parameters for approval. This is what's allowed for the sign code, and this is what we are providing. We are in full compliance with the materials, the materiality, the design, the square footage, the sign area, all of these things. Our request is simply, our variance request is about the location. So I just want to reiterate that we are trying to follow the design parameters, we think they're great design, you can see here the decorative screen wall, we think a very important kind of art feature of that, the sign blade, and then the board form concrete that forms it. So we can go through any detail you'd like, but we are in full compliance with the sign area. This again, same thing for type two, actually on type two, as it's Lowell, a little bit more of a transition into a neighborhood rather than from federal, we're actually providing a much smaller sign area, twenty-six square feet instead of the forty feet that would be allowed. Again, focused only again, this request on the location. As was noted by staff and correctly, a subdivision entry sign, I'm just going to read this, I think we all read code, look at code all the time, I think, I'll be generous and say there's a lot of ways to interpret this language. A subdivision entry sign is a monument sign located along the entry to a subdivision from a collector or arterial street. All of parcel A is a subdivision, all of parcel A is a subdivision, and eighty-fourth and eighty-eighth, and federal and Lowell, all are either collector or arterial streets. We believe this is in full compliance with the definition of where an entry sign could be. We understand there is some precedent, some history of how we've looked at where those monumentations are, so we agreed, let's go through this variance request, to go through it. To make this variance request, as was noted by staff, again correctly, six determinations, six criteria to look at. We will now go through these six. I will note, just for ease of presentations, items three through six are fully supported by staff, they noted in their staff report, they do not believe that these signs will change the essential character of the land use designation, will not be detrimental to any abutting properties, does not pose a threat to public health, and is a sign type that is allowed. I just want to reiterate that though again, there is no change in the essential character, there's no detriment to adjoining land properties, any of those things. It is really about the first two, is there something unique about this site, about this development, why we need these signs here? And then also, does the purpose of this, our request weaken the sign code? We believe it actually strengthens it, we also believe it reflects five plus years of comprehensive planning on this site to deliver a mixed-use community. Kaylee will go through the sign code requests now, one by one, and then I'll come back.
Good evening, Commissioners, as Marcus mentioned, Kaylee Gillespie with Norris Design. We thank you for your time this evening, and we're going to walk through each of those required determinations that Marcus just touched on. The first being the special circumstance and conditions. There are two special circumstances that apply to this proposal, and not generally to all subdivision entries within the cop plan designation or the zone district. These special circumstances were not created by the property owner, these relate directly to the site's location within the city, as well as the relative location within the Westminster Heights transition area.
Yeah, it's not showing to the next. Thank you.
Thank you. Uplands is denoted on the map on the right-hand side with the red star located just to the west of the priority transit corridor along federal. The purpose of this map is to show how the The purpose of this map is to show how these locations are not only entries into Uplands, but key entries or re-entries into Westminster. At the top of the map on 88th and Federal is a key re-entry into the city from the joint intersection of Federal Heights. As you continue south, 84th is a key entrance into the city from the I-25 interchange, and Federal from your US-36 interchange. Even the 84th and Lowell intersection is a re-entry into the city as it borders unincorporated Adams County land to the southeast. The second special circumstance is that we are within the Westminster Heights Transition Area, denoted in the 2040 comp plan. The yellow circles depict the primary gateways at 88th and 84th along Federal. Per the comp plan, a gateway is a change in a development character or a natural point along a roadway which a traveler gains a sense of having entered the city or a particular part of the city. It goes on to note that this impression can be impacted through things such as signs and monuments. As part of the goals within the 2040 comp plan, further supports the focus on the streetscape and public realm to provide a strong sense of entry into a passage through this city at key intersections through streetscape enhancement, development scale and orientation, lighting, signage, and public art. Today, the existing conditions within the transition area do not adequately provide a traveler with a welcoming entry or a sense of having arrived to a particular portion of the city. The sign variance enhances the placemaking at key intersections and key entries into the city, helping create a distinct sense of place that gives the community an identity. As an example, here on the right-hand side of the screen, this can help encourage commercial development, not only within Uplands, but the Westminster Heights Transition Area in general. The second criteria discusses whether the variance weakens the general purpose of the sign regulations, the comp plan, or zoning regulations. The variance does not weaken any of these three documents, but aligns with the purpose and intent and goals within these documents. The proposal complies with the purpose of the sign regulations within the Westminster Code, applicable purpose statement from code that are listed here on the screen. As guided by the 2040 comp plan, these signs provide effective identity and public awareness by locating signs at full movement intersections, which further reduce traffic hazards caused by distractions and limitations due to median locations. The signs protect and provide harmony between the residential and commercial uses, giving people a sense of place, further supported in Chapter 7 of the comp plan, that residents who live within a vibrant community further support local business, and additionally, these signs further complement the overall character while preserving the character that is there today. These signs also assist the city and Uplands in meeting the goals of the comp plan and zone district. The comp plan identifies much of Uplands as mixed-use neighborhood, which is intended for inclusive neighborhoods with a mix of uses blended together in a walkable pedestrian-oriented village development pattern. Uplands was specifically laid out to create this inclusive and connected and mixed-use community. The sign variance unifies the commercial and residential design intent by creating coordinated entry features, welcoming residents and their guests into the overall Uplands community, instead of only relying upon sub-neighborhood and/or commercial-specific entries. These entries help establish a strong sense of place for Uplands and this portion of Westminster in general. This is needed to encourage commercial reinvestment and create a more complete 20-minute neighborhood that is so much a part of the intent behind the goals described in the 2040 comp plan. The signs help Uplands and the city meet the goals within the comp plan's vision and the planned cornerstone of 1.3 of Great Neighborhoods, and the goal LU1 about achieving a balance of uses, and goal LU5 about creating a sense of place throughout placement of an active use and design frontages and public realm, and goal HN5 of maintaining and enhancing Westminster's positive image and character through active streetscapes. The signs strengthen the purpose of the zone district as well. The Westminster Code specifically describes the intent of zoning as providing a way to integrate land uses rather than traditional standard treatment of land uses, which separates them. The zone district encourages mixed-use development with unified design providing continuity between various elements. The variance creates a unified design intent that can help the mixed-use success of Uplands and surrounding area. Instead of placing individual entry signs at each entry into the neighborhood and Uplands, we're establishing a sense of place and unified design intent at key intersection and key entries to the city. As noted in the staff report, the sign variance does not alter the essential character of the land use designation or zoning district in which the sign is located. In fact, the sign variance creates a strong presence of place, enhances the city's image and character, and activates Uplands and the surrounding community in creating a unified design intent and encourages commercial development. As noted in the staff report, the sign variance is not detrimental to any abutting properties. Instead, it can assist abutting properties by enhancing placemaking and creating a welcoming entry feature. As noted in the staff report, the sign variance does not pose any threat to public health, safety, or welfare. These signs can actually improve and give advance notice to visitors that are entering Uplands community prior to them attempting to turn into the community. Federal is a major highway and a major arterial, and Uplands has limited access, mostly the ride-in, ride-outs, denoted with the white stars on the screen. The proposed cross-section of Federal Boulevard includes a median extending from 84th up to 88th, only breaking at 86th. 86th Avenue intersection includes two travel lanes and a future bus lane on both sides of that median. Locating the signs at West 84th and 88th, shown with the blue stars, gives travelers notice to turn at either of those intersections and/or gives them additional time to get into the correct lane to turn at the signal at 86. Similarly, the sign located at West 84th and Lowell, in the orange star, the sign gives visitors advance notice to either turn at 84th Avenue to access the eastern portions of Uplands, or their turn is coming up along Lowell Boulevard. With Lowell shown here and the white dashed line being a two-lane street, this can help traffic move more slowly, smoothly. And lastly, as staff noted, this variance does not request the Planning Commission grant a variance on type of sign that would not otherwise be permitted. We simply are asking Planning Commission to support the revised but logical interpretation of where the subdivision entry signs can be located within the community, which is at the entry of the overall Uplands subdivision, instead at the internal entries to the sub-neighourhoods within the overall Uplands subdivision.
Great. It's Kaylee. I'll conclude here. I think one thing we want to acknowledge is this shows in transitioning here the six criteria that we are asked to meet in requesting a Sign Code variance from all of you. The handout that we provided to you, I think, is instructive in also talking about the practical implications of what this request is. We are showing here in this map the three sign variance requests that we are making. We also are showing in red dots, locations allowed based on staff interpretation, fully supporting that, fully acknowledging. What I would focus on and draw your attention to is particularly on Federal and Lowell, to look at those locations. The other locations where these entry signs would be allowed are at 85th and 87th along Federal. If I am driving northbound on Federal, I cannot turn on 85th or 87th. This is not wayfinding. It is not sense of place. It is confusing. It is me driving down Federal, looking for a sense of arrival, a sense of place, and not knowing how to get there. We will have signage at 86th for the town center. That is why even more importantly, that sense of arrival at 84th and 88th is so important. I would note very particularly to the first criteria about special circumstances, the other sign locations along Federal simply don't work. They don't provide signage, wayfinding, location, sense of place, all the things that are the basis of the Sign Code and the way it has been put together. I think that's a very unique thing about this site and why we are doing that. Lastly, I would say this, you're probably sensing a little uncomfortableness from our team. We have had and will always have a remarkable relationship with staff, with the community, trying to work through every detail before we come forward. As you know, when you make a Sign Code variance request, you simply send in a narrative and it is scheduled. There's not a lot of iterative process back and forth with staff. So we fully respect staff's interpretation. I don't disagree with it at all. I think there are opportunities here for this variance to be granted to improve and actually improve the conditions of what we have all worked so hard to plan here at Uplands. We would respectfully request and suggest that we meet all the variance requests. We're going to stop there because honestly, we'd love to hear your feedback. We'd love to have a discussion if we're missing something, but we would reiterate, as we look at that town center at 86th at Federal, most notably, or along Lowell, the sense of arrival is not a block north or south into Shaw Heights. If I'm at Uplands at that corner of 84th and Lowell, that is the sense of place. I would also note on Federal, think of the 100-foot setback, the landscaping setback on Federal. We need to hold the corner. We need to have that sense of arrival as BRT comes into that corridor. This will be very important for wayfinding. So with all of that, we do believe we meet the approval criteria. We would respectfully request your support for the sign variance, and we're very happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions from Commissioners?
Yes, I have one.
Sure.
You mentioned a future BRT corridor, but you didn't provide any location of where the existing or planned bus stops are on Federal. Do you have that at hand?
I'm going to turn to Kaylee. Commissioner, she'll go through that in just a moment. I think one thing, certainly thinking about the full movement at 86th, as you understand. I think the other thing I would say at 84th and 88th, as you well know, those are signalized intersections, right? So it's that place where we look at signage, we look at wayfinding. You are asking about future locations for the BRT or current locations?
Existing or planned.
Existing is north of 86th is where that location is there. There's some signage there. Again, we will have signs at 86th into the town center. That's the retail corridor, the Village Center entrance. So that would be there. That would respect that. That would help on wayfinding. But again, we think right there at 88th, how important that is to find that location.
Okay, and my next question is about, this is a traditional mixed-use development. One of the things that we try to promote with that is pedestrian access. Do you have basically a picture of where the sidewalks are close to the requested sign variances?
Sure, absolutely. Can we, I'm going to go to an image if I may. Kaylee, if you want to go through, I'm just going to show, if I may, Commissioner, on this slide here. So one, this shows the signs that are the small stars that are obviously signalized intersections, and then it goes through the typology of the pedestrian connections. I know you understand that well. Along Federal, the 10-foot multi-use trail, along Lowell as well, the striped bike lanes. On Federal, there's a 100-foot setback, landscaping setback to really absorb and transition away from that. Then our image of that sign, and I'll have Kaylee describe this if I'm going to the right place, this shows that view there along Federal and how that setback into that landscape buffer, that 100-foot. So this is a depiction, an accurate depiction, of where that signage would be there at 84th and Federal.
Did that fully answer? Do you want some more on the pedestrian connectivity portion?
I saw the bus stops marked, it looked like two slides back?
Yes.
Okay.
Just on both sides.
How about sidewalks?
So the sidewalks along Federal Boulevard, we're going to have a 10-foot concrete multi-use trail. Along 88th, we have a 10-foot multi-use trail, and we also have an 8-foot striped bike lane.
Those go along, I think you just said Federal and 84th, is that true?
88th.
88th, okay. But they don't enter the neighborhood at the corner. Is that true?
Correct.
Okay.
And then 84th has an 8-foot sidewalk as well as a striped bike lane.
Okay, and also does not enter the neighborhood?
Correct.
Okay.
Does that answer?
Yes, that answers my question.
Commissioner Kinnear, did you have a question?
I do, thank you. A couple of questions. First, you had characterized the Lowell, Federal, 88th, and 84th as collector and arterial streets.
Sure.
What aren't collector or arterial streets if those are?
Yeah, and I'm, sure, I'm just answering from a street classification standpoint. Those are how those are denoted. So, sir, I understand your question, are there other streets across? Certainly, there are interior streets into a neighborhood that would not be that type of street typology.
And then looking at, the concern that you had expressed trying to overcome is giving notice so people can access. Wouldn't signage, I was looking at the red dots on your handout, but you can look at the sign that's up here. If you're heading north on Federal, wouldn't signage at 80, the equivalent of 85th, alert people to the fact that they're at this Upland development, giving them time to turn on 86th? And likewise, heading south on Federal, signs on 87th equivalent would give that? And if you're heading south on Lowell, your sign would effectively be a farewell? Oops, you've passed.
Yeah, there will be signage, though, further north on Lowell, so I'll answer that specifically about that. I think the other reason that I will denote that there's not a sign at 88th and Lowell is because that's a park, so that is public, so there wouldn't be, nor should there be signage there. So we think it's there. I understand your point, sir, about along the Federal corridor, but I actually wouldn't challenge that. I think that's actually a very distracting, moving north on Federal, and you see it at 85th in a perhaps middle turn or middle lane, and then have to move over to 86th. I think, I guess I'm trying to understand the implication of why it's not better at 84th. If it's wayfinding, if it's sense of direction, if it's sense of place, when I am at the stoplight headed northbound at 84th, that's when I see the signage. That is the entry point. And I would say to Commissioner Peg, I just want to be sure and answer your question about the sidewalks. You absolutely enter the community at 84th and 88th. You enter two homes that front right there that are on 84th. You are just not entering internal to the community. We are facing all sides of these roadways, right? We have properties that are at 84th, that are at 88th, that are at Federal, at Lowell. So that's entering the community, the pedestrian realm. I am experiencing a front yard experience. I believe that is entering the community from all of the corners.
Just one quick clarification to Tim in regards to your pedestrian connectivity entry into the neighborhoods. There are breaks in our Federal buffer and the landscaping for pedestrians to enter into the A5 and A7 neighborhoods.
I think I need a picture of it to fully understand what you're saying.
I do not have a full picture on hand, but I will, are you able to see that?
Okay, so I'm looking at page 1 of this handout that you provided, and there are four filings on the left, or blocks on the left, and four on the right, and you said A5 and A...
Seven. So let's start with the north one, where we have the northernmost corner at 88th and Federal.
Just a second. Okay, okay, 88th and Federal.
So basically halfway through, before you get to the red dot, from 88th to that red dot, roughly halfway, there is a pedestrian access, a sidewalk connection to get you from Federal into the A5 neighborhood.
Okay, and what exactly do you mean by inside the A5 neighborhood?
It would be an entry for a pedestrian to enter.
And you could enter a home that is not adjacent to Federal or 88th from there?
Correct.
Okay.
For a pedestrian only, not vehicular.
Okay, and then...
So going south at 84th and Federal, the same situation where you have the Uplands logo there and the red dot, roughly about halfway there, there's also a pedestrian access for somebody to get from Federal Boulevard into that neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. That answers my questions.
Okay, I see we have a couple more who would like to speak, but before we get to that, I would ask, if you're going south on Federal, let's just look at the Federal right away for a second. You've got four places you can put monument signs, and if I'm a driver, that is going to really help me know that there's a street there and that I can turn there. and that I can turn there. Are you going, are you planning to put those four signs in?
We are not planning those signs. I'm going to have Kaylee answer that. So again, I just want to be sure, Commissioner Chair, that we're showing that these are potential locations that would meet the staff interpretation of where they could go. Okay? So I want to be sure we're not planning all those. Let's answer that order.
Okay.
We are planning those two signs at 88th and 84th, and then we'll also have signage at 86.
86, okay.
Sorry. Yeah, yeah, 86.
The 87th and 85th are both right-in, right-out only, correct?
Correct. That is correct.
So how will you let drivers know that the street is coming up where they can turn?
And that is the whole point of why the blue stars, why we were asking for this variance request, because that is a stoplight. If you are in a vehicle, you are stopped and you know that you are about to enter that, right? And you have time to get over before you get to the 86 intersection to be able to turn left there. That's the only opportunity you have to turn left before you get up to 88.
Okay. I was thinking of someone southbound making use of the right-in. Will there be some kind of a sign there? If not a monument sign, will there be a sign saying, okay, this is?
Not at this point in time.
Okay. All right. It seems to me that drivers are going to be confused because they may not see that intersection coming up, and they may want to turn before they get to 86. But, so it would seem to me a sign there would be much more useful. But I will accept your answer. And Commissioner Tomacek, are you up, Commissioner Dunn? You have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I suppose this might be, this might be better directed to staff, but it appears to me that the, especially for southbound drivers, no, correction, especially northbound drivers, the two proposed signs at 84th and 88th seem to make the most sense to me. My question is, considering the signage that's approved, that's not necessarily there yet, but the signage that's approved on 85th and 87th, would it, would the city be, maybe that's not the right question, would it be okay if the city were to allow the signs as proposed on 84th and 88th and maybe allow a minor sign in 85th and 87th? If, you know, if the developer decides to go and do that, what would be the? It seems to me that there is a, that there's a benefit, especially to northbound drivers looking for that intersection or looking for that entrance that the developer's talking about. What would be the, what precludes that from being a special circumstance? I guess is what I'm asking.
Thank you for your question. So in regards to would it be okay or not okay? Staff, it has a set, a set of criteria that was shared that we have to review variances by. And that's specific, and those criteria are the specific reason why we are recommending the denial. In terms of special circumstances, as was previously noted, that there's plenty of opportunities for entering this subdivision that would meet the criteria. And further, it would be in the best interest to stray away from doing variances from definitions as definitions have a very clear set on how the item is looked at, and any sort of stray from the definition kind of allows interpretation that wouldn't be measurable objectively. If that makes sense.
I still, I don't see what, why this is not a special circumstance according to the statute.
So when we're looking at subdivision entry signs by the definition, it would be any sort of instance where you could enter the subdivision off of the collector or arterial streets into the subdivision. And there are ample opportunities to enter the subdivision from arterial or collector streets that go directly into the neighborhood. And this is historically how this subdivision entry sign has been viewed upon since the sign code was adopted, the most recent sign code was adopted. And maybe this graphic would be a better thing to pull up.
Okay, I can, I can see that. However, there's still, there's still the problem of the northbound driver. I mean, for the southbound driver, that makes, that makes, of course, perfect sense. But to the northbound driver, there is only one opportunity to turn left into the subdivision according to, according to the statute there.
Commissioner Dunn, I'd like to ask this person with his answer here. So specifically for special circumstances or conditions, the municipal code actually lists out what, a few examples of that, that existence of buildings, topography, vegetation, sign structures, or other matters on adjacent lots or within the adjacent public right-of-way that would substantially restrict the effectiveness of the sign in question. And so in that termination, we have, since this is a vacant land, the developers designed it themselves, there are no structures, sign structures, vegetation, or anything on the property that would restrict the effectiveness of a sign. So the question you're asking is, what about that specific location? By the time you would see this sign northbound on Federal, you would not have, again, it's only limited to 40 square feet. We don't allow large, large signs because the intent is not to brand. The intent is to provide specifically just wayfinding of which street do I turn at. So at 84th, you won't have time to get into the left lane by the time you see this sign. So that's why at 86th, we will allow a monument sign, which is a separate sign type that's allowed in commercial districts. They'll be allowed one there, which is where you can actually make the turn into the development there. At 85th and 87th, they could also have signs there. That is a compliant location. They're not proposing them with their development plans. 88th, for the northbound, that sign wouldn't be effective. The sign type that they're designing is one-sided, and it'll be facing towards the intersection. So if you're headed northbound on Federal, you won't see that sign at 88th.
But you would see the sign at 84th, I take it?
You, you could, possibly, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tomacek?
Yes, this is for the Uplands team. Marcus, you kind of made a statement in passing that there was precedent elsewhere to support what you guys would like to do versus what the city's proposing. Could you point out what those precedents are?
Yeah, sure, Commissioner. And I hope what I was trying to say is I would concur that I have seen precedent for this type of entry all over Westminster, so more consistent with how staff is reading that. I would give you an example, sir, though, of not in Westminster. I want to be very clear about that, that in our presentation, just to the east and the new community off of Pecos, there is an arrival now that shows that you are arriving at the corner. The signage is all at the corner. It's at 54th, and you are now into that. We also believe that if you think of Summit Square, Summit Square has detention right on the corner, so right across the street. We think it is of, it's very important to have that arrival because we think we're going to do so much to Summit Square as well, and how important that signage is to hold that corner. I would also tell you, and this is an answer, for all new mixed-use communities, we have so many more traditional suburban communities where the entry is a block-in. You don't have homes facing a pedestrian level. You don't have sidewalks that connect in. It makes perfect sense. This is the entrance to the, is at 84th and 88th. This is how you do it. I also want to be very clear about something that was just said, the barrier, the special condition. When you're on northbound, on Federal, there will be a median. You cannot make the turn at 85th. There is a median. That restricts the effectiveness of the signs at other locations. It makes only the right-in, right-bound, southbound work, right? And I will also note, if you're headed southbound, you are headed to I-25 or I-36, right? Generally, those are the entry points a lot of people are going. So we believe there are very special circumstances at 85th and 87th where the other signs would go. I realize the way it's worded is, is there a special circumstance? Almost all of those conditions you read are about, is the signage larger or smaller? Is it impaired? Is it view? We're talking about where the right location is. So I think we've really provided justification of why that criteria is met about the right location on this site.
Okay. So you're touching on my second question. I'm an engineer by trade.
Sure.
And my experience with everything from land development to new buildings and so on is if a code is there and you can comply, you comply.
Yes.
You've provided us quite a lot of good justification, and I don't necessarily disagree with a whole lot of it, but you haven't explained what the underlying reason for not just, not just putting up the required monument signs is.
Yeah, completely agree. And I'll say it as respectfully as we can. We, this is a special circumstances that we are asking for this sign variance. It would be much easier to simply comply with 85th and 87th. We don't believe it's effective, and we are concerned about one very special and certain thing. We need that Village Center to work. We need the retail to work at 86th. We need a sense of place, and we need Summit Square to work as well. And we do not believe that three signs at 87th, 86th, and 85th are proper monumentation to have a sense of arrival and tell me I am going to that future grocery store at 86th. There's a full movement intersection at 86th. So, sir, we should just be more honest. We need this signage because we need a true mixed-use community. It's different than a regular suburban neighborhood. This is entrance to a mixed-use community, and we believe catching people at 84th when I sit there at a light or 88th, and I get a plan to go to the grocery store at 86th, we think it's very important. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Kinnear?
Thank you. Marcus, can you tell me a little bit more about what the property is going to look like along Federal Boulevard along the west side? Besides those signs on the corners that you're proposing, is there anything else that's going to give somebody a hint that there's a new community there? Is there things that tie it together, like fencing or landscaping, that will identify the community? Or, and then that's part of the first question. The second question is, 85th, 87th will both have signs, correct? They'll be street signs?
There will be street signs.
Are they regular street signs, just like regular Westminster street signs? Or are you guys proposing anything special?
I'll have Kaylee answer that first part, and then we'll come back to the second.
So that, that first part, I don't know if you guys are able to zoom in on your screens here, but starting with the center image here, which is our northernmost intersection at 88th and Federal, you can see that 100-foot buffer, and you can see the intentional landscape design on angled pattern. There's also walls that follow through with the pattern, and our monumentation goes off of very similar design component. So it bookends the community on the north and the south end, and then continues throughout with similar materials.
So I think what you're saying is you have these monuments on the corners to get people's attention, but the fact that there's a consistent landscaping and enhanced walls and fencing that ties the community together, it's not as necessary to have those other signs for those other streets because you know you've entered, or that's the community. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay. And 86th will have some type of entry sign, the smaller version. You just don't need as large of a sign there because the corners, we were trying to get people's attention.
Exactly.
That makes a lot of sense to me. Okay. I think that was my question. Thank you.
Just regular street signs.
Oh, street signs, yeah.
Just regular street signs at 85th and 87th.
Okay. So it's not that people won't know they can turn in there. They'll know it's the community because they'll see all the other enhancements, the landscaping, the fencing, the walls, and then they'll see the signs that say it's time to go in. Okay. Thank you.
Exactly. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to thank Secretary Baden for sending out the final plats for all these sites so we could have a chance to review those, because I think that, that actually brought up a few questions for me. I see that, and there's probably more questions for staff than for you at this point, but I see that the subdivision is inside, but I also see reception numbers at, for additional right-of-way dedicated at 88th and Federal, 84th and Federal, and Lowell and 84th. Is that, is that an accurate interpretation of what I'm reading on these plats?
Can you clarify the first part, Commissioner?
Sure. So the, these plats all seem to be done in 2024. There's also a reception number there for summary of 2024. For example, at Federal and 88th is reception number 2024-000027140. So that tells me that that was recorded in 2024 as a right-of-way dedication at Lowell and, I'm sorry, at Federal and 88th.
So the overall larger parcel A was originally platted in '23, and that's the time when they dedicated all of the public land to the city. So the private, the public parks that we, that the city will eventually build, they did that through a separate plat that platted all of parcel A. That also dedicated a bunch of street right-of-ways, so 85th, 86th, 87th, those are platted streets right now, and you could, well, we can't because it's a construction site.
Can't drive through yet, but we will be able to.
It's a public right-of-way right now.
Yeah. So, so what I'm getting at is that 88th, 84th, and Lowell are part of the Uplands development because they are already dedicated as part of that planning process. Are they not?
No, those streets all existed before the Uplands. They provided additional.
Not the right-of-way that was just dedicated, what didn't?
Well, that's a, sure, that a portion of the right-of-way was not.
A portion of the right-of-way was dedicated, where Lowell is being reconstructed and where the public sidewalk is on Federal, that's all new, that's all, that's all basically new land. These are, why, so, no, my, what I'm pointing to is, from my view, I think your, with all due respect, I think your interpretation's incorrect. These were planted as part of the development, the, at least the, for the, for the sidewalk and for extra travel lanes and bike, and the bike path along Lowell and everything else. Those were all part of the development. And if so, these are, why are these not entrances to the development?
Our view is that 84th, 88th, Lowell, and Federal are not entrances into their development. Those were existing streets that surround the subdivision.
Yeah. But the, but you have, but we did dedicate new right-of-way there, and so it is that as a part of this development.
Sure. As many developments do, they dedicate additional right-of-way as needed.
Absolutely. Well, I understand. Well, we, I think, so I think, I think we're just arguing about interpretations now, but I, yeah, anyhow, I'll, I'll hold that, I'll hold that fire for now. But thank you for, thank you for answering those questions. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Peg?
I have more questions for staff. Sorry. I know you just sat down. So in staff's notes, you say the intent of the subdivision entry sign classification is to provide wayfinding for vehicular traffic. But in Westminster Municipal Code, all I see is that, oh, I've gotten a little disorganized here. Ah, subdivision entry sign is a monument sign located along the entry to a subdivision from a collector or arterial street. But I see, I see in particular the use of the word wayfinding for vehicular traffic as a narrowing of that. Can you justify that?
Sure, Commissioner. So the TMUND, Traditional Mixed Use Neighborhood Design Guidelines, actually specifically state that signs should be used for pedestrian wayfinding only. That's, that's the TMUND guideline view of it. When we crafted the master ODP for the overall Uplands development on parcel A, we allowed all of the sign types based off just what was allowed in the new sign code. all of the sign types based off just what was allowed in the new sign code. The intent portion there is the, what staff intended when we drafted the new sign code. We particularly added these new graphics here. We did not have graphics in our old code, so we added these specific graphics to our new code with pictures and a sign kind of showing what we viewed as sufficient to illustrate, here's the entrance into the development, there's the acceptable sign locations there. It has since come clear to us on staff that we needed to be even more specific on exclaiming what our intent is. A 40-square-foot sign is four feet by 10 feet. That's not a sign that a pedestrian is going to need. It's much larger than a pedestrian would need because of the speed you're walking at. It's more than you would need on a bicycle because again, it's faster. That's more than you would need to see it on a bicycle. That's the, that's the size of a sign that you would need when you're in a car and you're traveling at 40, 50 miles an hour. So our, the intent behind this sign, and as one of the authors of the sign code, I can say this, the intent behind this sign type is to provide wayfinding for vehicles. Where do I turn? How do I get into this subdivision? It was not intended to brand a subdivision. We wanted to try to get away from the idea of branding subdivisions.
I mean, it is a big sign, but it is not unusable for a pedestrian. Is that true?
That's correct.
And further, if there is a sidewalk that connects from the public right-of-way outside the development to an area inside the development off the public right-of-way and not immediately adjacent to it, isn't that an entrance?
So the, again, though, this would not be located where the sidewalks enter into the development. I have both of the development plans up. I can pull all them and show you where those sidewalks are. This isn't the, the hard corner of 88th and Federal is not a sidewalk that leads you into the development. That's the sidewalks along the perimeter. Then you proceed down to the half-block in between 88th and 87th and that's where the junction is. So if it was, the intent was to be for a pedestrian to use this as wayfinding, then it would need to be down there. And then along 84th, the same thing there, between 84th and 85th, it's the half-block is where the pedestrian walk is. And then along 84th, there's another one.
Okay. So you said there is no pedestrian entrance from 84th, sorry, yeah, 84th and Federal into the development?
Not directly. It'd probably be easier if I just pull up the plan so you can see it. Do you want me to re-hit the button? Oh, maybe I need to push it further. So this is the 84th and Federal intersection here. So this is the 84th and Federal intersection here. Here's the requested sign. Oh. Is it not being?
Screen up there.
Let's not. If I can drag that.
Is a big blue sign usable?
Okay, sorry. This is going to be a little discombobulating. Here is the intersection of 84th and Federal. This is the requested sign here. So here's the main sidewalk along Federal Boulevard. Here's the main sidewalk going along 84th. And so there's this, this entrance here that gives you access to the alleys and then brings you up to this first row of homes.
Is that not an entrance?
It could be construed as an entrance, I suppose, if that's. That, that could be construed as an, as an entrance, I suppose. And then here on 85th.
Entry to a subdivision.
Is that entrance for vehicular traffic or pedestrian?
The one Commissioner Peg is asking for would be pedestrians at the sidewalk, so I suppose bicycles as well. Here is the 80, 88th and Federal intersection. Let me go up to that one. Here's the 88th and Federal one. So again, there's the sidewalk that goes along 88th, the sidewalk that goes down Federal. There's this one off 84th here and then we go further down.
Sorry, did you go back to the one?
There's the half-block there.
So the sidewalk that enters from 86th, does that also give you access? Sorry, I use the word enter and I realize what we're quibbling over is the definition of enter. The sidewalk that enters from 86th, does that connect internally to the neighborhood?
The sidewalk from 86th?
Yes, you.
Yes, the sidewalks from 86th would, would, that, once your 86th is essentially in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Did I answer all your questions?
I think so. I guess my last question is if it's a pedestrian entry sign, how is that not consistent with what is in municipal code?
If I can take a stab at answer to that. Commissioner Peg, if you scroll down to the illustration here, so the illustration and the definitions are meant to be taken in tandem. So one doesn't exist without the other. And so when you read the definition that talks about subdivision entry, the illustration shows you visually what an entry is and what that means.
Right. And so in, then we've got the table and the illustration shows a number seven in a circle, an arrow highlighting the distance from that circle to the curb. And then we come down to number seven and it says, three feet back from the curb. But it doesn't say anything specifically about vehicular entrance.
That's what the, just for clarification, and I know that the audience is possibly not looking at, yes, we are. And so that is a vehicular entrance right there. Number seven in the center of that entrance is a median. The other seven, number seven that's located on the curb radius is on the inside of that curb radius. So the picture illustrates a vehicular entrance and that's what's, that's what the definition is referring to. And so the definition can't be taken out of context from the image and the image can't be taken out of context with the definition. They're intended by the code to work in tandem.
Commissioner Carley, we also have other sign types that they could employ to create pedestrian entry signs. They would be allowed to post additional, smaller signs that are scaled towards pedestrians.
No, the, the answer I just got was very helpful. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure thing, Commissioner.
Okay. Before we take any more input from the commission, I'd like to go ahead and get the public testimony here. So I'd like to open the testimony portion of the hearing and remind everyone, please keep your comments to five minutes or less. Did we receive any emails or voicemails on this?
No emails or voicemails, just two in-person have signed up so far this evening. John Palmer is first.
Okay.
Thank you for this opportunity. I would hope that you would uphold staff's recommendation on this in the denial, simply for the fact that it does not meet the code as just explained by John Carpenter, excuse me, by John McConnell. By approving this, you're setting a precedent that could just run wild. Now, I don't know which particular neighborhoods you folks live in, but the majority of the neighborhoods that I drive by have one entrance sign. The connections right down the hill here, Skyline Village over at 88th and Lowell, Highland Greens, Highland Greens East, Huntington Trail, they have their monument sign at the entrance, not blocks and quarter miles before. Again, a bad precedence. I do think we could have done a little better job in communicating this to the community with the sendout if we only sent out 94 or contacted 94 residents. Look at the area. I think it was kind of done on purpose that we only enforced the 300-foot rule. It should have been a lot more. That's a whole nother story. These particular signs, we're already losing a majority of the view corridor off of Federal. You're just blocking more of the view corridor that the people deserve. And as far as we've been talking about this right in, right out, and the northbound Federal, hey, you miss it. You turn at 86th to the east, you turn around and come back across the intersection. You go up to 88th, you go west and you come in from the other end. So I don't see that, that that's a big deal. Putting these monument signs on the corners there where the stoplights are, that just creates a distraction for drivers. We already have enough accidents happening at 84th and Federal and 88th and Federal. We don't need more distracted drivers. This creates for a bad situation. The BRT comment, we don't even know if that's ever going to come to fruition. That's another pipe dream, kind of like the light rail, so we won't go there. Another problem in our neighborhood you're probably not aware of, and I will speak specifically to the Cottonwood Village, right there at 88th and Federal, graffiti headquarters of the world. We're just asking for another place for these vandals to vandalize our neighborhood. And I mean our neighborhood, that's the Shaw Heights neighborhood that have been a place for years. So we don't need another canvas of this type on the corners. It just, it doesn't look good. The optics are terrible. Go drive by 88th and Federal on your way home or come by tomorrow. Look at all the graffiti on the wall. We don't need any more of that. We don't need to give these people an opportunity. You know, if they were anticipating this way back in the beginning, why wasn't this on the original ODP or PDP when they brought it to you, when they brought it to City Council? Instead, here at the last minute, we want something special, something special that none of the other contractors asked for. They're going to be I-sourced. It's outrageous. One other thing I'd like to mention to you folks is about signs and uplands. I don't know if any of you are aware, but they erected a billboard at 82nd and Lowell on top of the hill on city property without a permit, without permission, and again, on city property. We, as a neighborhood, had to get ahold of code enforcement to get that taken care of. Also, they keep touting these sidewalks. Well, the sidewalk up on 88th that's theirs currently, I've had numerous calls from, from people in my neighborhood about their children traversing that sidewalk over the past week in the snow and ice. They're not responsible. They need to be held accountable for that and trying to bully our neighborhood. We don't need more signs. Everybody knows who they are, what they are, and where they are. So again, I hope that you uphold staff's decision to deny this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Jim Fenimore.
Jim Fenimore here. Been in the neighborhood since 1958. Been around a couple days. One of my biggest concerns with the development going in was traffic and also it fitting into the community that already exists. With the traffic movement on Federal, it's not going to get any better. And the way I look at this is that we need to make sure that the emergency vehicles coming from Station Two or any, the police department is able to meet the four-minute response time. As time goes on, these intersections are going to get busier and busier as the development comes together and starts finishing out and people start coming to that community to shop and live. With the extra parking that's going to be on the perimeter, it's going to be additional congestion. My thought is, is we need to move this traffic as fast as possible, not slow it down. Right now, I can sit at 84th and Federal and go east. It'll take me sometimes, depending on traffic and time, two to three minutes, I mean, two to three cycles to get through that intersection. When we have fire apparatuses, emergency trying to go east, that's slowing the response time down. We tried to get some fire stations built in this city to where we could lower response time and that was denied. So we do not need to tie up our emergency vehicles any longer than possible, needed. One thing also is to take and move this traffic, people look around and we're talking mainly, we're not worried about bicycles trying to figure out how to get into the subdivision. We're not worried about people trying to walk and get into that subdivision. We're talking about traffic. That is a traffic area, high traffic, and it's going to be much more. I hear that RTD's big proposal that's going to make everything great again about traffic flow on Federal is to eliminate the turn lanes and make them full-through lanes and add buses that are 60 feet long. I see buses running up and down Federal all the time and they got two and three people in them. And it's like, give me a break. The buses aren't going to save this area. So what I'm asking, and I stand behind, is a signage system that when people are able to, at a glance, look over and if they're wanting to go into that shopping center or they got to go in there and see their grandmother or their cousin or whoever in that development, they can go, hey, you know what? I got to go up to 86th and hang a left if I'm going north. Or if they're coming southbound, or they can do 88th or they can do 84th. You know, I'm, I'm not a big opponent to, you know, billboard signs that are 20 feet wide and 30 feet tall. But if we put in signs that move the traffic, make people aware of what's going on, people need to be able to look. And, you know, people nowadays, they're, they're terrible drivers. They're just flying here and flying in there and left turn, right turn here, cutting you off. And so we need to make this area safe. If they want to get into that uplands development area, let's get them in there. Something else is, is that I look at, this is an opportunity for the city to take, make a statement in these signs to where it says, you're entering the great city of Westminster. I mean, you don't have to put the great city of Westminster, but you could take and put down, city was established in 1849 or whatever, you know? Put the establishment down. And also put down like the elevation. You know, we're giving some history to our community. We're giving something that's vital and is valuable. So whatever you guys' decisions are, let's do something for the community that makes something good for the city and moves the dead gum traffic. Because I go up and down that road all the time and I'm sick of the congestion right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further people who would like to comment during the public testimony? Seeing none, we'll close the public testimony and open the question to any concerns or other questions that Commissioners may have. Commissioner Mayo?
Yeah, I've got a question for staff. And let's leave the slide up that's up there. That gives an example of allowable entry signs. That gives an example of allowable entry signs. There's three pictures. The one on the far right is an entry sign right in the middle of the right-of-way, kind of an island. The one in the middle is the other number seven in the graphic there on the bottom of the page, showing you've got a street and you've got the entry sign kind of on a curve in the pocket there. What's that picture on the far left-hand side? What's that trying to depict?
So I would say that this would still depict what we've been talking about as an entry into the subdivision. When you're looking at hard corners, such as the recommended intersection, or, excuse me, the requested intersections, those aren't serving as actual entryways into the subdivision.
Well, the two pictures on the right are depicting entries into the subdivision. You can clearly see the streets, so those are clearly vehicle entries. The picture on the left looks like what we're talking about.
Commissioner Cane answered that. The two pictures on the right are actually the exact same sign, just from a different angle. So the one on the right is kind of illustrating how it's in a median in the middle. The left is illustrating the design intent of the sign. We do have a requirement for how these are designed in our residential design standards. The one on the left is also a sign that's in the median of an entrance into a subdivision as well. I've looked all of these up, they're all in Kansas City, Missouri.
It's a big median that's not on the corner?
Correct, that's a big median, yeah, in Missouri, where our co-consultant took the picture.
Okay, because the picture's kind of confusing there. It looks like a branding picture on the corner of a development.
Sure, that's a great suggestion. In our next draft, I'll have that picture changed.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Mayo, if I could add, revisit something I said earlier. I think that's the importance with this code of having the text, having an image and a picture, and a diagram, so it's more easily understood versus just a traditional code that has text. And we're all left trying to figure out, what does the text mean? And so you take the sum total of all the information that you have here, and it paints a clearer picture of what type of sign it is.
Okay, it's just a little confusing because you've got the two number sevens, to me, the two pictures on the right. And I don't see anything that would, you know, kind of relate to the picture on the left. If the picture on the left is showing a median, why do we have two pictures showing a median?
You could also ask the question, why do we have pictures at all? The diagram's pretty clear, too. So, you know, when I look at it, it's very clear, and everybody, you know, other folks may see something different. But again, the diagram's pretty clear as to what a subdivision entry sign is and where it should be located.
Okay. All right. So you guys might try to clarify that in the future? Or maybe if that is a median, put a picture that it's pulled back a little bit so you see streets on both sides?
We can certainly do that.
Okay, because right now, it's kind of deceiving.
It's the first time we've seen any confusion over it, not to single you out there. But now that we know there can be some confusion over it, we'll work on that in the next update.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we get to the Commissioners, I have a question for staff. Is your greatest concern about this variance, the fact that it will set a bad precedent?
So we don't have precedents that I am aware of, of deviating from a definition. And definitions set the tone for all the criteria that follows. And so when we start deviating from definitions, it can create situations where we have things that aren't looked the way that they're supposed to be with the criteria that is set for them. And further to kind of one of the other points that was made earlier, there are monument entry signs, excuse me, not entry signs, monument sign types that would be able to be used to help identify the area. This is asking for a greater allowance by changing what is deemed as a subdivision entry sign as another type of already existing monumental identification sign, if that makes sense.
So you're not too worried about precedent, but your stronger urge is not to violate the definition. Is that correct?
Correct. So, sorry if I misunderstood the question. We don't want to set a precedent for deviating from the definition.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Tomacek.
This is for staff, and it may take someone who's been around a little longer, so this may be more a question for John than the other folks. I live over toward 104th and Federal, and at 112th and Federal, on the southeast corner, there's a large masonry wall that has Savory Farms on it. And on the opposite side, on the southwest corner, that wall has the name of Keystone Place, which is the senior housing development that's behind it. Those two signs look a whole lot like what these folks are proposing. Is there something different about those two as opposed to what they're asking for?
Yes, there is. Those two signs were put in place prior to this code. So just like any other zoning code provision, there will be non-conforming structures, non-conforming setbacks, building heights when a new code is adopted. So those were done prior to this code.
So what I'm hearing is, we used to allow it, now we don't?
Yes, this code was intentionally more specific, and that was the direction of our council at the time. And this code was an effort to try to become compliant with recent Supreme Court case law on signs. You've heard us talk about Reed versus Gilbert, content neutrality, and that was the big lift on this. But there was a desire to have a code that was more illustrative and clearer. I understand we have caused some confusion tonight, but the idea was to have something that had pictures and images and would tell a better story about what the regulation was intended to do. So, and I'll add something else, if you don't mind, to the last question that Mr. Beierhoff answered. So your action tonight does not set a precedent. You're acting on a variance request for this applicant, this particular property. If you grant the variance, it doesn't change the code. So we would still apply the code. So if you find that it meets the criteria per the code, you may grant the variance. And that would be based on the special circumstances in this applicant as you see it. Thank you.
Commissioner Colley.
I'll make this quick. I just have a couple more statements I wanted to make. The staff mentioned that it was important to provide wayfinding for cars so that you can get you where you need to go. In my opinion, the corner signs mark the corners of the community, and that the street signs show where you enter the subdivision. When you're coming north on Federal Boulevard, you're going 45 miles an hour, and there's a hill. So having something there that you see, you know, when you approach that line, because I've gone through that intersection so many times, I think it's important to have something there. So to me, I think, you know, even like Mr. Fenimore said, he made a comment about, it's important for the cars to have good direction so they know where they're going. Any kind of cues that give them an idea of where they're going are important. I think the corner signs are important. If you want to add more signs at 85th and 87th also, that's fine, but I don't think you need it because I think it's obvious that that's the community. You'll see the fencing, you'll see everything else that happens along there. I don't think it's necessary, but I think the corner signs are extremely important to let people that are driving down Federal see that and prepare to get into the left lane so they can turn left on 86 West into the community. So I actually think this plan works really well. Sorry, no questions, that was just sort of an editorial.
Well, that's what we need to hear. Commissioner, Kinnear.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess as an attorney, I'm a bit more of a literalist, but when I see an application for an entry sign, I would expect it to be at an entry, and other signs might be in other places. To suggest that you're driving north on Federal and cross 84th, you're now in, you have entered the neighborhood or the subdivision. When there is a median and two other lanes of traffic in the other direction defies logic. I just think we have these, the code was done for a reason. We want entry signs to be where you can enter a subdivision, and these sign locations don't do that. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Peg.
Just one more question for staff, I promise. You mentioned that other sign types were available for pedestrian navigation from 86th and Federal and 88th, sorry, 84th and Federal and 88th and Federal. What are those sign types?
So the sign code lists a bunch of different allowed sign types, including wayfinding signs and monument signs. And this kind of also goes off of what Commissioner Colley was talking about with, there is opportunity to place signs on the corner or to serve as other purposes, such as that wayfinding sign. There's set allowances for each of these types. So part of what the code does is that it prevents overbranding of areas by giving specific parameters for each of those different sign types. And so by using a subdivision entry sign as a monument or identification type sign, that is also increasing from what the code allows for that sign type, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess from my perspective, given that there are other available sign types for pedestrian navigation and that the subdivision entry sign specifically is for vehicle entry, it's hard for me to see how this is a viable variance.
Thank you. And I would also comment that this is actually kind of a tough question because we want the city code to be enforced consistently, but this is a tasteful sign. It is not lit, or it may be lit, but it is not lit internally. It is not a distraction to drivers other than the fact that it's there, so it isn't going to be a driving distraction. And they're trying to create a brand, and I understand that. So this is going to be a tough question. I'm not sure exactly how I'm going to vote, but there's good arguments on both sides. Any other comments? Commissioner Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to comment that it, that this proposal makes perfect sense to me. Considering the practical applications, considering the practical nature of this, two drivers in this area, the northeast sign at 88th might not be particularly necessary, but I believe that the other two are. They're quite vital in helping to direct traffic into the subdivision, especially with what Commissioner Kinnear has stated. It is most practical to have that sign at 84th and Federal. And I think it's, on a smaller scale, just as practical to have that sign at 84th and Lowell. So I plan to support this.
Okay, then we need to decide whether we want to make a motion to deny or make a motion to approve this variance. Is there any discussion on that? Commissioner Colley.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the sign as represented by the Uplands subdivision entry signs located at the Uplands, filing number one, tract A, block four, tract D, block five, and tract M, block seven, as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Dunn. Any discussion? Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to, just want to put my thoughts on the record here. Again, I, you know, I don't, I don't believe, I respectfully disagree, I don't believe we are deviating from the definitions of the sign code. We were here when the sign code got updated, and we had our shot at it, and it certainly was not part of my understanding that we would be enforcing it this way. I think, based on the picture showed up there, that we're, this is, that the number seven off the back curb is exactly what the applicant is proposing. I think the applicant is dedicated right-of-way in these areas, and this is going adjacent to those, that newly dedicated right-of-way. They are entering the subdivision, or at least, at least in all practical purposes. Certainly pedestrians, but the cars, too. I think they've, you know, I think, I think it's pretty clear from my standpoint. I know we want to enforce the sign code as it's written, and, but we also seem to be enforcing it with a higher level of scrutiny than we enforce other codes in the city. That's, we have this, we had the PF Chang's horse statues that were also called signs, which is an entirely different issue. For example, that, again, had, you know, had, we understood that it was going to be interpreted that way at the time, I would, I certainly would have spoken up and said, hey, wait a minute, are we doing this the right way? So I believe, I believe the applicant has met the requirements, and I will be in support of the application.
Thank you. Commissioner Kinnear.
Yeah, I think to expand a little bit on what I said before, I just think for the purpose of an entry sign, it might be nice to have signs on all corners, letting people know where in the world they are. These don't happen to be at the entry, and I think we're just ignoring the code to say, put the sign where you want, where you think it's most efficacious, rather than at the entry, and I just think that's a bad, a bad move.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, let me remind the Commissioners that we are boarding to approve the variance on this next vote. So do we need a roll call on this?
Commissioner Kinnear.
No.
Commissioner Mayo.
No.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Chair Bossert.
Yes.
Commissioner Colley.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek.
No.
So by my count, it was seven to three, is that correct? Excuse me, four to three? So the motion passes? I wish it was seven to three. The motion passes, and you are granted a variance for this item. Thank you for your input, and thank you, staff, for your presentation. At this time, I'd like to move on to item 3B.
Mr. Chairman, may we take a quick biopic before we move on to our next presentation?
Let's go ahead and take 10 minutes for a restroom break.
It's going to be an hour or 45 minutes of presentations.
Yeah.
All right. I'll take it. Go ahead.[524.01]
...plan for Uplands filing one, block three, and PA three also labeled. And who is presenting for the city? Jacob, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jacob Kaza, Principal Planner of the City's Planning Division. As a part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the public notices published in the Westminster window, the mailed notices, and the posted notices are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The notices of the public hearing were mailed to 864 property owners and tenants within 1,000 feet of the parcel under consideration tonight. Two public notification signs were posted on the subject property. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. Here's a map of Block Three filing number one of the Uplands development. The project site is located southeast of the intersection of Lowell Boulevard and West 86th Avenue. This site plan is from Sheet 10 of the Block Three ODP. All of the units are alley loaded. One of the publicly accessible private parks is located directly north of the detention pond, and the other is east of the detention pond. Section 11515 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 17 criteria that are to be considered when reviewing official development plans. Staff finds that the official development plan generally meets these criteria as outlined in the agenda memo. Staff's recommendation is to hold a public hearing and recommend that City Council approve the ODP, subject to the additional condition located in the summary of staff recommendation in the staff agenda memo. Staff finds that a recommendation of approval of the application would meet the city's strategic plan priorities. Access to opportunity and economic vitality are met by facilitating new development and providing new publicly accessible park space. The applicant is with us tonight and has a presentation to share with you as well. And we have several staff members that can answer questions with you this evening. Thank you.
Great. Good evening. We'll jump right in. I'm Marcus Pockner, Land Use Consultant for Uplands. Thank you to Jacob and team, as always, here to present tonight on A3. Just as we start, always an overall community map for everyone to see. On the larger parcel A, now seeing A3 there in yellow, that is the application that is before you. All of the others that show underlying site plan are approved neighborhoods. And as you can see, this leaves the kind of the village green, the park, the public PLD just to the east of that site, and then the town center, the village center, the A6 parcel remaining. You can see the other colors in purple process sites around the neighborhood that are going through the process. I do want to particularly note here, there was a question, this site, A3 again, Lowell to Irving, 85th to 86th, looking at the pedestrian connections of this, the fabric, in so many ways. And the reason A3 is here tonight is because this has the detention pond, it has set the basis, the height, the connection, everything to A3, really from all these neighborhoods as it drains to this. So you look at that, you also look at the pedestrian fabric, the 10-foot multi-use trail to the west side of it, along Lowell, the strip bike lane. On 86th, there's an eight-foot, or excuse me, a six-foot, and then on 85th and on Irving, an eight-foot sidewalk around it. We also have very much focused on the internal site as well, and Kaylee will talk about that. Just to keep up to date on the overall MODP, we think it's really important when we hear people talk about traffic and density and all of those. Right now, we are showing 89 less units than was approved in the ODPs, and that's really just been part of the planning process, the layout and how this has worked. You can see A3 is actually 14 units under what was allowed in the site-specific ODP. Again, here's the site, understanding that, and certainly the importance of this site as it's really been established by A2 and A4, the heights, the transition, and the drainage that goes through this thing. Concept review, just as we have incorporated that into the process, there was a lot of discussion, really a lot of frankly, support for the housing diversity of this site. We were able to get three different typologies in there. This is a terrific neighborhood, we all talked about, and in the neighborhood, we love this neighborhood. We think it actually makes the detention area, the open space around it, really meaningful space and landscaped area, and preserves some pretty remarkable views across that area as well. So those were the things that we heard. We also did full community, neighborhood meetings, and then some individual follow-up on some specific design questions. This is our compliance sheet. You can see overall the PLD and all the things you know about Uplands that are completed. But the unit count, again, we're only at 127 units, right in line. We actually have more publicly accessible private parks, and again, three different building forms. I'll turn here to Kaylee to walk through the neighborhood specifics and the architecture.
Good evening again, Commissioners. Kaylee Gillespie with Norris Design. We are pleased to bring forth the Uplands A3 neighborhood, which will add to the rich for-sale housing stock in the area. As noted, we have A2 approved neighborhood to the north and A4 to the south. There are three points of access into the neighborhood along West 86th Avenue to the north, and an additional access point along West 85th Avenue to the south. The local roads are shown in the dark gray, and alleys are denoted in the lighter gray color. We're providing four different alley-loaded home types within the neighborhood for a total of 127 homes to allow for diverse streetscapes and a variety of housing options. The homes along West 86th Avenue in the brown color are two-story townhomes that mimic the adjacent neighborhood fabric and provide a pedestrian-friendly streetscape with a new architectural style. The two-story paired homes are denoted in orange, and these are located in a couple places within the neighborhood, including along Lowell Boulevard, where they provide compliance with the perimeter sensitivity for the paired homes with a max height of two stories per the approved MODP. The darker yellow color lots are three-story, single-family detached homes. These homes are located internal to the neighborhood to create a transition from the existing neighborhood to our west. The light cream color are two-story tuck-under, single-family detached homes. These front along West 85th Avenue and Irving Street in the southeast corner. These tuck-under homes have a two-story front elevation and a three-story rear elevation, which are strategically located to accommodate the existing grid. There's a 5.01 acres of detention located in the southwest corner of this neighborhood and is not a part of this application, but is currently under construction as part of the overall Uplands infrastructure. The blue stars on the plan denote our two publicly accessible private parks, providing nearly an acre of park space within this neighborhood, with multiple pickup stations and bike amenities provided throughout. Here you can see the proposed neighborhood in the center and the approved A2 to the north and A4 to the south. This shows our rich connections to the PLD and overall connectivity throughout the western portion of the Uplands A planning area, and how it will inform the future connections as the east is developed. The first publicly accessible private park is themed off of the library. The centrally located to the north of the detention, the park consists of tree groves, seating elements, shade structure, structures to house books, and an open recreational Here's a closer look at the shade structure that will house the books located on the north end of the park. And the second park is just to the east of the detention and is themed off of the den, which encourages congregation through the playground and chalk walk play elements. All parks and landscape area will focus on low-water landscape use.
Just going to run through, and we can come back. Any questions, our architect is here. The four plans, this is the single-family attached, the two-and-a-half story. Just seeing the four different floor plans, really talking about the architecture style, pointing out that in these models, we will also have a three-car option in Plan One, tandem alley parking. And then I think the things we want to focus on are also the standard features, which we now think are such an integral part of the electrification and energy-ready homes that we're building on the site. I think the other one now, looking at the single-family, the three-story home, seeing the articulation of them, contemporary in the prairie elevation style. Again, four floor plans for each of those. Again, one with the tandem alley. So trying to really incorporate diversity of product and really taking advantage of the open space that is there, the activeness of the community. This shows the paired homes, really looking at those, looking at the opportunities to feel more of a large style, kind of more, looks like a large lot home, but a paired home, and bringing in the different elevations there. And then finally, the three different floor plans in the townhomes, focused again, the single-family attached townhome to have that product, to bring a little bit more attainability, right? Just model size of the units, you can see just a smaller square footage, and kind of looking at the Scandinavian elevation as well, to bring in some different elements to the design as well. We'll now turn to the exceptions that are listed in this, and Kaylee will go through that, and then we'll close it.
All the exceptions are supported by the intent of the PUD Zone District, which encourages innovative development with the intention of providing diversification and flexibility in housing types, prices, and overall design. These exceptions collectively allow us to provide additional housing diversity within the city that is pedestrian-friendly and uses water thoughtfully and meets the overall intent of the approved PDP and MODP. Next, we're going to wrap, sorry. Our first exception is regards to parking, which is supported by the 2021 Westminster Transportation Mobility Plan, the 2040 Comp Plan, and the Westminster Municipal Code. The exception addresses how parking is provided, which is consistent with the previously approved Uplands neighborhoods, and is supported by the approved visions within the PDP and MODP. We meet and exceed city's code parking requirements in total, but in a different way. A total of 365 spaces are required and 444 spaces are provided, with an additional 30 guest parking spaces provided along Lowell Boulevard. The orange color on the screen denotes the two-car minimum garage spaces across all home types. The blue denotes our head and guest parking spaces, and the purple along our internal streets are parallel parking spaces, which also help with traffic calming. The additional 30 spaces that are provided along Lowell in excess of the requirement are shown in the teal color. And finally, homebuyers, as Marcus mentioned, have the option for a three-car tandem garage on the tuck-under, single-family detached floor plan, as well as one of the three-story single-family detached floor plans. All requests on this slide are consistent with the approved neighborhoods. Our first exception is tied to the architectural characteristics within the MODP. Similar with past neighborhoods, we're requesting a lower roof pitch that allows for some main roofs to have more contemporary home design, and a secondary roof, such as a porch roof to accommodate an egress window above. We are requesting a reduction in the overall percentage of single-family attached homes and an increase in the percentage of the single-family detached home. The reduction allows us to find the right balance between the housing types and the number of exceptions needed while creating a quality neighborhood. And lastly, our single-family detached and single-family attached townhome standards and on-site exceptions are shown in the table. The standards are located on the left, and the right describes what is shown within our ODP.
I think our last report out that we always show is how we're doing on water conservation. The plan on this, as everybody knows, this 778 acre feet, as you can see there right now with the planning, we are estimating 678 acre feet. So we've reduced that acreage usage, water usage, by 100 acre feet. We're doing that inside the home and outside the home. The landscape, we show the ways we're doing it. Intentional approaches inside the home, that's really creating 30% of those savings. We are tracking it on a PDP basis. I think that you all did such a great job and staff of creating a way, basically a dashboard to follow that, and so we're reporting back. And then you see the landscaping examples that we're doing there as well. We do believe we're in full compliance with the approval criteria. Thank you for all the time tonight. We respectfully request your support.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Collins?
I do have a question. Can you go back to the slide that shows your setbacks?
Sure.
Explain to me a little bit more clearly, I apologize. What exactly are you asking for reduction? It's the stuff on the left is the MOD, and the stuff on the right is the Uplands. So it looks like you're reducing the lot depth? Just walk me through this a little bit.
Yeah, let's start with the single-family attached townhome. So the lot depth required per the MODP is 80 feet, and we're requesting to drop that down to 69 feet. As for the single-family detached, there's a 90-foot requirement, and we're requesting to reduce that to 67. And then the front setback to the living area, there, we're asking for 14 feet for the single, or 14 feet is required for the single-family detached, and we're requesting 12.
Okay.
And the rear setback for the single-family attached townhomes is five feet, and we're requesting to reduce that to three feet. And then the single-family detached, the requirement is three foot to seven feet, and we are requesting that that be in compliance there as well. Then the side setback, interior corner, there's a seven foot or 14 foot, and we're asking for five and 10. So interior seven is the requirement, corner is 14. So we're requesting interior five, corner 10. And then the private outdoor space, we are just asking for you guys to consider this in a different way. We are providing outdoor space, but that's combined through porches, decks, and yards. So we have 140 square feet provided minimum for townhomes and 401 square feet for single-family detached. And all townhomes will have 120-foot clear rear deck space.
Thank you very much. So the side yard setback for interior lots, now instead of them being 14 feet apart, seven foot on each side, it's five foot, which is 10 feet between buildings. Is that correct?
Correct.
For both, oh, for, for single-family detached, you'll have five feet between buildings. And that's, just, just so I understand, I think the other Commissioners understand this too, but it's, it's to the face of the building, or is it to that roof overhang?
It's to the face.
To the face. So your roof overhang is 18 inches? No, how much is the roof overhang?
Roughly.
It's five feet from the building to property.
To the lot line.
Ten feet.
Ten feet.
So it's to the, it's to the siding or to the building. So the roof overhangs encroach into that. So I'm sorry, the reason I'm bringing this up is this, this whole fire situation in California has really got me thinking about how close buildings are. And it's just, you know, the code says seven, and we're reducing it to five. So you're that much closer. It is, I, I watched a few years ago, my neighbor's house across the street caught on fire, and the winds were whipping, and the next house to it caught on fire while I'm standing there watching it. It was very breathtaking for me. It just hits home with me. I, I just, I know that I just ask for variance on signage, but in this situation, I just think that we need to be careful with how close we put buildings together. So that's my only comment on this. It's probably too late, because we're probably too far down the road on this, because we've probably, have we given other variances on side yard setbacks throughout this whole thing? Yeah. Okay, well, thank you for walking me through that.
Real quick, Tracy, just a quick reminder too, that all of our homes are sprinklered as well.
That helps, thank you. And I also, Kaylee, I want to thank you for your parking analysis, and it really looks like the parking is more evenly spread out through this community. It looks really good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, at this time then, I'd like to open the public testimony, and would ask, did we get any emails or voicemails on this?
No emails or voicemails. We just have one speaker, and that's John Palmer.
Okay, please remember to keep your comments under five minutes. Thank you.
I have a vested interest in this piece of property across the street for me, as you all well know. Naturally, you know, I'm going to ask that it be denied. I know it's not going to be, but there's a lot of things that come into play here. Traffic, it's already a nightmare. They claim it's not going to be a problem. It can take me 10 minutes to get in or out of my driveway at certain times of the day. So traffic is a problem. They keep talking about view corridors and the views. Well, what they want to do, or what they've done across the street for me, that's the only place on the Uplands property, they've raised the elevation about 15, 18 feet. I know I had a meeting with staff and, and these people about it. Only place on the property they've done this. They claim for drainage. I claim it's a retaliation move for me being outspoken. And look at it, drive by there. They want to put four paired homes on top of that hill. Two-story, on top of the raised elevation already off of Lowell. That blocks my view. We'll never see, see the day, or we'll never see the sun, you know, to the point of the street's going to be an icy mess. I heard them mention well water. Where's this well water coming from? I'm not sure that we have well water in our neighborhood. It's all accounted for. If they're talking reclaimed water, we do not have that in our neighborhood. Parking on Lowell, it's already a mess, even without them building. They're not taking into account the bumpouts that they've put in the sidewalk there that they plan on. On the, that slide 21, it was showing exceptions. I, I didn't see where it talked about the exceptions for the paired homes. It only talked about townhomes and single-family homes. So we might want to get a little clarity on the paired homes, that there are several of on that property. Those would be the single-family attached homes, I guess, that would be more correct as, as what we're talking about, as opposed to how they're calling them townhomes. Never heard them tell you anything about the cost of these properties. I haven't heard anything about senior housing on this particular piece of property. And when I mean senior housing, I'm talking for elderly people, townhomes, patio homes, something that's accessible to seniors. Commissioner Collins, thank you for your comments about the fire. That's been a big concern in our neighborhood, as well as the city. I've been addressed by multiple people about that, how we dodged a bullet with Marshall, and the travesty in California. And I know they say they're sprinklered. Well, people in California had sprinklers. They also put sprinklers out in their roofs and in their houses to try and save. That cut down on the, the water available for the firemen to fight fires in the rest of the neighborhoods. That's a concern. Along with that, when this was all approved initially, the Uplands and the city were supposed to put a new water line in down Lowell Boulevard to facilitate all of this building. Again, with what's happened in California, it's become a major concern in my neighborhood. And that all has to do with the proximity of the houses and how flammable they are. I don't care if they're built with flameproof material, you get enough fire, enough heat, it's going to catch on fire. Just look at what happened in California. Like I said, you all know where I stand on this, but most importantly, that's something that's been taking place over there, and it's a state violation. They keep violating the code about having stormwater storage on their property. This has been going on for months and months and months. Stormwater is only to be retained for 72 hours. We've had water over there for months. I'm also very concerned with how it's laid out now with this detention area that they keep showing grass in. It's a lake. Somebody's going to get hurt over there, be it child, somebody's going to lose a pet. That's not what they're showing you in this pretty picture with the grass. It's a lake. Unacceptable. That's stormwater. It shouldn't be being retained there. So some things that you should take into account, maybe get some clarity on, if you would, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during the public testimony? Seeing none, I will close the public testimony portion of this hearing and invite discussion among Commissioners or emotion. Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like a little bit more clarity on the rationale for the setback changes, and also a couple of Mr. Palmer's questions as well, I think would be good to have, the, I don't know, about the icy roads. I don't know if there was a shadow analysis done or anything like that. Has this water line not been installed in Lowell, or what, what's the timing on that? And if we could maybe just speak to the, what's going on with the detention pond? I know that the outfall was put in, but if it's still retaining water when it's supposed to be a detention pond, not a retention pond, and something still not quite complete.
Sure, Commissioner. I'm going to have Ryan, our engineer, answer those, because I want him to be sure. And again, referencing very fair questions, that was part of the previous application, the infrastructure, going through that process. I think one of the things I just wanted to state is, I just, there is no retaliation of any of this. I want to be really upfront about that. Mr. Palmer has done a great deal and has led a tremendous amount of community involvement in this site. What I would say particularly about that is that infrastructure was designed earlier, that, that detention basin. So the roadways, the pedestrian connections, Irving, all the north-south streets, that is laid out in grade, right? That is how that is. I would also note, sir, that just going through that process, and why the engineer come up on that, those improvements that are happening there, you know, on Lowell, those are being built today. We're going through that process, widening that infrastructure, and we are making those water line improvements right now. We've actually facilitated an improvement that the city was doing as well at 88th and Lowell, and we've actually expedited that process, because the street was open to make some of those improvements as well. But I'll talk to that, and Ryan is here, I'm sorry, right behind me.
Good evening. Ryan Littleton with HR Green, Civil Engineering Consultant. A couple of the points, the, the water line in Lowell, originally, that was noted as a 24-inch, to replace an existing 12-inch water line with a 24-inch. As we went through the design process with the city, determined to leave the 12-inch in place and instead run a 16-inch water line in Irving to get the equivalent capacity. So it is a 24-inch line coming from Bradburn North, and when it gets to 84th, it remains 12-inch in Lowell, and we branch off to a 16-inch in 84th through Irving and through 88th.
Creating some redundancy, some redundancy in the system.
Yeah.
Resiliency.
Exactly. With regard to the detention pond, obviously, the site is still a very active construction site. So the detention pond in interim is acting as a sediment basin, which is holding water to allow sediment to fall out. So what is released in the new storm outfall down Shaw is clean water. So interim, yes, it's holding water as it's supposed to during construction activities. Ultimately, it will be an extended dry detention basin that will not hold water except during storm events.
Okay, great. Okay. And then I think the other question, and this may not be you, but shadow analysis or icing analysis or anything like that, as far as Mr. Palmer brought up about the shadows over Lowell or anything?
No, nothing like that has been performed, but I, I would like to state that it isn't a 14-foot grade change. That's probably what it looks like right now, but about four to five feet of that is a temporary condition where we are diverting or ensuring that stormwater until development does not drain onto Lowell, is diverted to...
That's what the 14-foot they put.
It's diverted to the extended or the temporary sediment basin.
So it's basically a temporary diversion dam on top of that to...
That's right.
...direct the water in, and it'll be cut down several feet to grade after?
Well, it, there will be a great difference between Lowell and the next block in, which is King Street. We will have 10 feet or so grade elevation between Lowell and the next block, which is King Street.
Okay, great. Thank you for that.
Sure.
And I had a quick question. I heard someone mention wells. Are you going to be using any subsurface or well water for this site?
We are not. I, I don't know where that, I don't think we said it, I heard it in the public testimony, but we are not using wells here.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Collins?
I was going to ask the engineer a question about the standing water...
Sure.
...in the sediment pond. How deep is it? And is there any risk to, is there any risk?
Just going to the site plan.
Sure. The typical design is to allow two-and-a-half feet of standing water to allow that sediment to fall out.
So you could have up to two feet of water? Okay. Is there fences around it or anything to keep, like, neighborhood kids out of there or anything?
Pardon me?
Are there any fences or anything in the area to keep kids out of there?
I cannot speak to that.
Okay. It seems like a safety concern if there's two feet of standing water. That's the only reason why I ask. Thanks.
Commissioner Carpenter? Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think I got my answer on the reduction of the setbacks. And so I just wanted to ask for that. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So as a reminder, the reduction of the setback is five foot from the lot line to the building face. So 10 foot between homes face to face. And this allows for more compact alley-loaded homes and lot widths at Uplands, adjacent streets through pedestrian-friendly homes that engage the streets, and adjacent public space with front-facing public, or not public, front-facing outdoor space, like porches. That's why we're asking for this reduction. We're a more dense community, and this is very consistent with everything else that we brought forward.
Okay, yeah, I, no, the 10, well, five foot to the setback, 10 feet between houses minimum, except for at the Eves, I guess. That seems typical. Probably won't have to, are you going to fire rate those walls or anything, or is that an early question? Just sprinklers?
Bring up the architect.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Alex Jewick. I'm a Sutec architects. We're not required by the building code to fire rate them. I know there is an option that we put in that the builder possibly might use fiber cement siding, which would be a fireproof siding, but I'm not sure if they're going to do that or not.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, I think that answered my questions. Thank you.
Actually, that just brought up another question. With the situation all around the United States, hardening of the exterior of homes has become a really important issue. Is there any consideration being made to using cement siding on any of these structures?
That's why we put it in as an option. I'm not sure if they're going to do that, but they are considering it.
Okay, so the purchaser would decide that? Who would decide whether?
Yeah, no, I believe it's going to be the builder who's going to decide it. I think they're analyzing the cost.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. All right. I would highly recommend, considering the Marshall fire here and current fires, that hardening of the exterior is going to be the wave of the future.
Yeah, and I know that we're also trying to do other things, like the roof that we're doing is a Class A roof, which is the highest fire-protected roof that you can do on there. So we are considering different things that we can do also.
I recommend it's going to be coming, so.
Yeah, we understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, if we could get a motion in front of us here? Who's going to be brave? Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move the planning commission recommend city council approve the official development plan for Uplands filing 1 Block 3, subject to the condition listed in the agenda memo. This recommendation is based on a finding that the official development plan is supported by the criteria set forth in Sections 11-5-15 of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Kinnear?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I think I would just want to say that having a mixed-use neighborhood, to be able to have four different building types in such a small area is ideal. I think you don't see that very many places. I think that's one of the best things that I like about this little neighborhood, and how much you take the opportunity to have rear-loaded products, that you can front-load the architecture on the surrounding streets. I think that's going to be really nice. Thank you for your work.
I would just like to comment that these development plans have been well thought out. I am very impressed with this. I'm sorry the setbacks had to be shortened, but I will be supporting this anyway. And I'm very happy to see that this is a very well-thought-out plan. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call the question. Can we get a roll call, please?
Chair Boshert.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Colling?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Kinnear?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for your presentations. And thank you to staff for your presentation. Next item on the agenda is Item 3C. Let's see who's presenting. That's Mr. Spurgeon.
Thank you, Chair Boshert. Just getting my laptop connected now that the check list is out of the way. Thank you. I'm Andrew Spurgeon, long-range planner. Thank you, Chair Boshert, planning commissioners for letting me be here tonight. I'd like to present to you some minor proposed updates to the 2040 comprehensive plan and request that you hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to city council on adoption of the amendments that I'll be presenting. The agenda memo and attachments are entered into the public record, and this legislative public hearing has been noticed as required by municipal code.
Excuse me, is your microphone on? It's very quiet. Maybe you can talk into it a little more?
There you go.
How's that?
Better.
Better? There's also some conversations in the back of the room. Maybe ask them to go to the lobby, that would help. The 2040 comprehensive plan was recommended by this body on February 14th, 2023. That was, if you'll remember, that's how we spent our Valentine's Day two years ago. The plan was subsequently adopted by city council in second reading on March 27th, 2023. So it's been almost two years that staff has been working with this comprehensive plan to guide the physical development of the city. Through these two years, we've started to see some minor little things that need some corrections to make sure the document's usable, that it's helping meet the intent of city council for the vision of the city, making sure it's consistent with the business practices, and making sure that the maps are up to date to reflect annexations that have occurred since that 2023 adoption of the plan. Chapter 1 of the plan is sort of an introduction chapter, and it anticipates that it would be a living document. Chapter 9 of the plan is the administration provisions of the plan, and it specifically calls for the plan to be periodically revisited and updated as the city continues to grow and change over time. These cleanup amendments are really intended to be minor in nature. We are not intending to try to sneak anything really big and impactful into these. If there is a desire for that type of amendment, we would suggest that it go through a more robust vetting process with more participation. This is really meant to be more minor in nature, not substantive. There's two main topic areas that these amendments are going to have impacts associated there with. Senior housing, which is something that was identified as an important need for our city in the Housing Needs Assessment that was presented to council last year. There is a specific policy in the comprehensive plan in Chapter 7 that encourages senior housing to be located within residential areas with the thinking that other generations can support seniors and at locations that would be, have close proximity where there might be senior services or medical facilities, public facilities like libraries. As we've tried to work with that policy, but the land use destinations, it may be challenging to meet the intent of that policy because of some of the other locational criteria in the comprehensive plan. So we are proposing that for senior housing, we provide some relief on the locational criteria in order to meet that policy statement of being in and around neighborhoods. The other would be our parks and open space. Parks and open space are one of the defining characteristics of Westminster and why people like living here. And so, you know, in appreciation of the addition of 23 and 1/2 acres to that system, there were five properties that were annexed, and so updating all the maps in the comprehensive plan to reflect those new city boundaries with those five open space annexations. Some of the other amendments are, they're a little bit perfunctory. They're all provided in the attachment. But just looking at definitions, making sure that they're aligning with the terms we use in the plan, making sure that the land uses align with those defined terms. They're included in Appendix B and in other more minor things, cross-references, spelling corrections. This is all just to help the reader, whether it's staff or the public, understand and interpret the document and its intent. So our request to you tonight is to hold a public hearing, and upon conclusion of the hearing, to recommend that city council approve an ordinance to adopt the presented amendments to the 2040 comprehensive plan. The city strategic plan priority of access to opportunity is met by clarifying the plan's provisions for senior housing, and the priority for economic vitality is met by ensuring that employment land uses are properly defined in the plan. That concludes this item.
Thank you, Andrew. Any questions? Mr., Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one question for me on page, well, on the, under the public quasi-public area, I think it's on page 45. You, you're inserting "community" in front of "hospitals." Can you give some, can you enlighten me on that, please?
Sure. It's not as interesting as it may, you may hope it to be. Community hospital is a term we already have defined in the document, as opposed to hospital is not. So it was intended to help people align with that. And the community hospital definition is, at least what I think of, is a hospital where you could go for an emergency room visit or a scheduled procedure, or some sort of, you know, more advanced medical procedure that's not an outpatient type of thing. That is the intent, and that's what the community hospital definition supports. We didn't want it to potentially be used for another situation like an animal hospital or a shoe hospital, which I've actually seen. So we thought, we thought, well, we could direct them back to this definition to meet.
No, thank you for that. That actually does make sense. Does that, what would a freestanding ER, I know we've got a couple of those in the city, would that be considered a hospital in the definition, or is that a?
We would typically consider that a medical facility. I'm just going to double-check that definition, but I don't think. Yeah, so a community hospital, a hospital that is accessible to the general public and provides general and specific medical care, which is short-term, and which also focuses on preventing illnesses, not only treatment.
So that sounds like freestanding ERs and normal hospitals fit in that, and I get community hospitals, so we don't, we're not including the veterinarian clinics in there. That makes, that makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Commissioner Tomacek?
Yes, on page 37, you've made a change to the maximum number of units that could be on a particular place, and you've amended it to add greater densities may be permitted upon city council approval. Is that in every one of the various headings, or is it specific to this one?
That's a good question. That's a good question. This applies to mixed-use neighborhood, which is one of our types of land use that we have in Westminster. We, at this time, we only actually have four places where we have that land use. We have Bradburn Village, we have the Uplands, which you all just spent some time talking about. We have Highland Village up here on Sheridan. And then we have the, really the last undeveloped one is the North Gate Property, which is on the east side of Federal, south of 72nd, north of 70th Avenue. So it's those mixed-use neighborhoods, no others. The plan does density, it's a little confusing. It's an 18-unit per acre for the entire development. And the way that plays out, and we've done this since Bradburn Village is the farthest along of those, you know, we've seen it where one individual building may be very high density, but then when you look within the boundaries of the neighborhood, it gets to about 18. This provision to go higher, though, was in our prior comprehensive plans, and it was inadvertently left out here.
So since we have an amendment process and all that anyway, what, what does this particular phrase add?
Well, if someone wanted to exceed 18 units per acre, subject to the accounting of the whole subdivision, they would, if we interpret our comprehensive plan strictly, they would actually need to change the land use to something different to go above 18, because this 18 functions as a ceiling right now. And so, you know, we don't, we don't know that necessarily would make sense if you have one lot in the middle of a subdivision that's all mixed-use neighborhood to change the land use on it. You should fit within the pattern of your PDP that was the zoning for your neighborhood. This doesn't come up, I'm not sure how much it's ever really come up, but I think it gives applicants, when they've got that one single building, more certainty that they're not going to be held up in the approval process. We had the, the townhomes at Bradburn Village, which I think are getting built now, or that little mixed-use building. That building by itself exceeds 18, and it's just, it makes for some awkward accounting if you have to go figure out the entire subdivision, so.
I think my long-term concern with it is that as we progress with current trends, we're going to be knocking down a lot of the big-box retail shopping centers and putting mixed-use neighborhoods in them, and that we're going to be working with this particular issue in greater density over time.
Yeah, it's, and it's not a buy right. You don't, you're not guaranteed the density. It's still, it's subject to city council approvals, which means it would come here first. You all would review the zoning request, make a recommendation, and then city council would still hear it. We, in that type of case, you know, we'd probably bring to you a more robust analysis of the appropriateness of the density and the design of a higher-density development and things like, like you just talked about, things like parking and the water supply impact and all those type of things. So it'd be a case-by-case review.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Colling?
Thank you. Andrew, I have a question, and I'm sure there's a really good reason for it, but all of the maps have a note on them that says, "Update boundaries to reflect April 24th, 2023 annexations." And it's on the land use diagram and the open space, et cetera. Does that mean that these maps reflect the updated boundaries, or these maps will be updated to reflect?
Good question. That's a good clarification. So it's kind of a funny story. The comprehensive plan was adopted in March 2023, and a month later, it was already out of date. The overall impact was minimal, if any, because we annexed five properties. They're all open space. It's not like development's going to happen, and they're open space. But it meant that all these maps are now, don't show the new city boundaries. So the comprehensive plan that we printed, and, you know, I have a cabinet full of these things, they don't have, they have the city boundaries as they were when the comprehensive plan was approved. So this, this is really a note said, "I'm going to go in and change the city limits on all these maps." That's all the key master.
So this map doesn't reflect the current?
Right.
Okay, so my question is, why would you take, why would you take the time to do that when we're already in 2025? Why wouldn't we at least get it through the end of the year of 2024 or something? It just seems like it's outdated. Again, once you finish doing this, you'll be outdated again.
Well, we haven't annexed anything since then.
Okay, so those, so that all the, all the other maps, not just the annexation, but the land use diagrams and the open space maps and the school, community features, all of that stuff? I guess my point is, why are we updating something to a 2023 date versus when we're in 2025? Why don't we just do it now, or at least the end of 2024?
Well, so April 24th, 2023 was the date city council approved those five annexations, and we haven't annexed anything since then.
Okay.
That was the only reason there's a significance of that date. That was when council approved those five.
I think I understand what you're saying.
Why update something on zero?
I think I understand what you're, what you're saying. So I think, although the annexations took place in 2023, if we update it in 2025, it is updated to 2025 because there have not been any further annexations.
Not just annexations, but all these other maps too, the city structures, the facilities, the trails?
And the reason why we would want to update all those maps is because we're adding land to each one of those maps. Even though those maps convey different information, we need to update all those maps because when the, the land use map, for example, will designate that open space, and so on and so forth for the various maps. And so, the ch, and the chances of us annexing property at all in the near future is slim to none. There's just not any real opportunity to do that. But we want to use this sort of cleanup effort to clean up any, any discrepancies. So in a few more years, maybe even in a couple of years, we may do another, propose another cleanup amendment when adjustments are required to address current council goals and policies that are identified and tweaked in the plan. And at that time, if there's any other new map adjustments that have been made for annexations, we would, we would do that too.
So for instance, when I look at the exhibit 5-1, which is Parks, Open Space and Trail Systems, doesn't show anything in the Highlands neighborhood. Even though we know there's been parks that have been annexed and approved, there's trails in that area. This map will be basically, it's not, you'll be updating it, but it's not going to be current.
Right. So this map shows all the edits, like their red lines?
Okay.
Like if we brought you a code amendment, there'd be strike-throughs and underlines and stuff. So this is, these are the changes we will be making, assuming these amendments
So those will be added, is what you're saying? Okay.
Really, it's just that outer city limit line is not right right now because we have five little annexations.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Kinnear.
Yeah, I just had a quick follow-up question about the earlier question on the maximum, the city council approval. And it's, it maybe is a bit pick-on question, but you're, you're saying that this is necessary because the 18 unit per acre is a max. Wouldn't an applicant have an opportunity through a variance or other mechanism to, already to seek city council approval to change that?
The only way would be actually to change the land use to something different.
Okay. Great.
This is in a sense creating, I don't know if variances are, but this is, this is creating that, hey, city council, we want a section, we want to go to 20 units per acre, so 18. This would open the door for city council.
Sure. I, I just wondered if it was actually necessary because we have other, they have other mechanisms to accomplish the same thing through variances or something. What I'm hearing you saying is, no, they can't use a variance or other mechanism for that.
Exactly. The comp plan is absolute, council can't change it. They can't take an 18 dwelling unit per acre land use category and just say, we'll allow 24. So, yeah. So this gives them that variance mechanism.
Okay.
Commissioner Peg.
Yes, I have a question about the edits to page 28, specifically about special needs or congregant senior housing.
Yep.
I see you are changing those numbers from two and a half beds per dwelling unit to two. And let's see, where else was it? Oh, and then you give an example of the lowered amount allowed on four acres to, from 180 to 144. Where are those reductions coming from?
So we, we have density provisions that go two ways. There's units per acre, which is what we were just talking about, like with the mixed-use neighborhood. And then for senior housing, there's this, or congregant care, there's this alternative where you could count by beds instead of by units. And this is a provision that we've had for decades, and as we're getting more senior housing proposals, which we need as a city, the old model where there's a bunch of beds lined up in a room is not how they're building these anymore. Now, we're seeing, even with assistive living, they have their own rooms, they've got their own cooking and bathrooms and stuff. So we're seeing water use higher than we've accounted for. And so in talking to our utility staff, using a 2.0 multiplier instead of a 2.5 multiplier would more accurately reflect water use, which we're seeing with the newer facilities.
Okay, so the current facilities use about as much water as you would expect from 2.0 beds per unit. Is that, is that what you just said?
I think I said the other, the, the, an assistive living bed uses about half as much as a, as a typical dwelling unit.
Okay.
So therefore, there's a multiplier. So you could, it's a way to have more people than if you're using the units per acre. It's, it's actually a business friendly provision for, for senior housing that they, they have this alternative, if they don't want to use the units per acre, they can use the beds. But the 2.5 multiplier, our utility staff believes no longer reflects what we're actually seeing, that now that they have washing machines in them and dishwashers and full bathrooms, that's not what that formula was based on. So we were proposing to lower the multiplier to just 2.0.
Okay. Thank you for your explanation. And then on page 44, you cross out overnight stays, and I do not know what an overnight stay is. Could you explain that to me?
Well, that's kind of one of the reasons we're scratching it out. It's, this is our employment office institutional campus land use, so it's offices, it's hospitals, exactly. The intent was to differentiate medical facilities where people stay overnight in a hospital versus outpatient, but because those are already baked into the definitions, my, and this was on me, so shoot the arrows I made, but my thought was, well, we don't need that. We have other things that are already addressing this. So I was proposing to remove it just to keep the language simple.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Kinnear, did you have a question?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Commissioner Carpenter.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. This is, well, I know this is pedantic, but I'm going to do it anyway. On the map on page, oh, the view, the view corridor map, the view set gateways in historic context, seems to be unnumbered. Again, pedantic, but at 84th and Federal, it's showing that there's a view corridor going right through the middle of Uplands, where we've just approved a whole bunch of medium-density product in there, and there's not much of a view. Why is there a view arrow heading northwest from the corner of 84th and Federal?
So we, I'm going to try to answer this, but I'm going to look at Jacob. Uplands, through their, their planning and development, which is overall regulated by the PDP and later the MODP, and now this body is seeing individual ODPs like the one tonight, they did a phenomenal job working with staff to designate the view corridors and how they would comply, which doesn't necessarily mean no buildings, but it's how this building stood on a lot. That was all put in place under our old comprehensive plan. So it was kind of interesting. I mean, they kept talking about the new comprehensive plan. It was like, well, you were approved under the old comprehensive plan. So we're, we're confident that the views have been met through the way they've laid them out, through their beauty.
Okay. All right, it doesn't seem like there's much view there. I mean, I know the one on Bradburn and that area was saved, but yeah, I'm not sure that that one is accurate anymore, but it's not, just seems, I know it's pedantic, like I said, but it's, it does, it just does kind of raise the question. Maybe that, I just, I just don't remember focusing quite on, on that being a view corridor. Now, we don't really have any regulations on view corridors protections in the city, from what I recall.
Not, not specifically. We typically work with people either perhaps to maybe set a building back or to lower the height. It's more about how you place the buildings. It's not purely a, hey, this is an open space. It's just more about how we help work with the buildings or other site features to maintain those views.
Okay. All right, well, I'll have to believe it if I see it when that arrow comes to fruition. Thanks.
Okay, actually, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and open the public testimony portion of this hearing and ask the secretary, do we have any emails or voicemails?
No emails or voicemails? We do have one. Oh, he's giving me the no-go. So anyone else in the audience? Mr. Fenmore? No?
Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public testimony and ask for discussion and a motion on this. Someone must be brave.
I would, I would.
Oh, okay.
I move, I mean, if there's no discussion, I move that, did you hold your finger up? Oh, okay. I move that the planning commission recommends city council approve the cleanup amendments to the 2040 comprehensive plan as presented by staff.
I'd like to second that motion.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
Good job, Andrew.
All right. I'd like to call the question. Can we get a roll call, please?
Chair Boshert.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Colling.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Yes.
Commissioner Mayo.
Yes.
It looks like we have no contrarians here tonight, so it's a unanimous decision.
Yes.
I did. I'm so sorry.
Yes.
Sorry. But I have, you have the motion, you, you made the motion. I'm sorry. Commissioner Kinnear, what, Kinnear, what is your vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
You had a chance to be a contrarian, but you didn't do it. All right. Thank you, Andrew. And thank you, all the other staff. Do we have a meeting scheduled?
We do have a meeting scheduled for January 28th, as well as February 11th.
I thought the 28th had been canceled.
Did I speak out of turn?
I think so. I just got an email that said that 28th has been canceled.
Yeah.
And the 11th is the next.
And we got an email today that February is our next meeting.
Yep.
Who did the cancellation email come from?
Say, Dawn?
Yeah, I think Dawn sent, sent that when, when they combined all three items for tonight.
Yes.
Okay.
But.
Maybe I spoke out of turn. We'll clarify that.
Or I'll be surprised.
We'll clarify that. I'll let you know tomorrow.
Okay, if there is no other old business?
I've just been told we, we 100% have a meeting on the 28th. It's a go.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, well, okay. I will not be able to attend.
You will not? Okay. We'll make a note.
Okay.
You're up, Carpenter.
All right.
You're on. All right, if there's no other business of any kind, I am going to call this meeting concluded.